Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of holding the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 proposed property tax rate and budget and fiscal policy guidelines.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 25th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during tonight's public hearing. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input for the public hearing. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate that you would like to speak in the chat function. If you are participating via phone, indicate that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Thank you. Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our public hearing tonight is public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 amount of proposed property tax rate in dollars and the fiscal year 2026 budget and fiscal policy guidelines.
Need a motion to kick us off? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones, move to receive and file and approve. Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a PowerPoint presentation to share some information about the budget and how I arrived at the recommendation to do this property tax increase. But before I do that, I do want to read a media release that the city created in early March. And so the media release was triggered by the fact that the state law, starting last year, so this is the second year of this requirement, requires the city of Dubuque to mail to every home and business in town a taxpayer statement. And in that statement, the intent of the law is to tell the property owner, if the city council passes the tax rate that they set the public hearing on, here's how much your taxes will go up. And so then, an informed citizen, after reading that mailing, can decide whether they want to come to this public hearing and state their opinion of that, whether they think that's a fair increase, or maybe it would be a decrease, whatever it happened to be, or whether they object to it. The problem is that the state mandates the formula that you use in the mailing, and I'll read the media release, and then I'll just try and summarize it. So the city of Dubuque is informing residents and property owners that a taxpayer statement regarding next year's city of Dubuque property taxes will be delivered in the coming weeks. So it was delivered after this March 3rd. Dubuque property owners will soon receive notifications, which are required and prepared by the state of Iowa, showing a more than 14% increase in the city portion of residential property taxes next year, when the proposed increase is actually 3.9%. So I'll just repeat that part. Says showing that this mailing showing a more than 14% increase in the city portion of residential property taxes next year, when the proposed increase is actually 3.9% to residential property. The taxpayer statement will also indicate a 15.57% increase in the city portion of taxes for commercial property, when the proposed increase is actually 1.9% for commercial property. The Dubuque City Council has set a public hearing date for March 25th, so of course that's tonight, on a maximum proposed property tax rate for the next fiscal year that starts July 1st. That proposed rate is $10.06 per $1,000 of assessed value. This proposed rate would represent a 3.9% increase in city taxes for residential property, a 1.9% increase in city taxes for commercial property, and a 1.73% increase in city taxes for industrial property. The mailing is required by state legislation passed in 2023. The document, which must be mailed in March, is created by the Iowa Department of Management. The calculation used in the taxpayer statement by the Iowa Department of Management assumes a 10% increase in the valuation of both residential and commercial properties from 2025 to 2026. City of Dubuque properties were not assessed for reevaluation last year, so there is no basis for a 10% increase in valuations. Generally, only property owners who took out building permits to make property improvements might have increased assessments. 3.9% increase to the average Dubuque residential property owner includes a 2.35% increase in Iowa's property tax rollback rate, which makes more of a property's value subject to property taxes. And then it goes on to say where you can find information on the city website and some other things about what actually is happening. So while the mailing that went to property owners, and I'll stick with residential for a minute, said that they were going to get an over 14% property tax increase from the city of Dubuque, if this levy rate was adopted tonight, the actual facts is it would be a 3.9% increase to the average homeowner. And with that, I'll try and explain the, or mention some of the things that are at play here. So at this public hearing, the only option available to the city council are to approve the amount of the proposed fiscal year 2026 tax rate in dollars, as is, or decrease it. You cannot increase it from the amount that you used to set the public hearing. So the proposed property tax rate, in the current year, the rate was $9.93 per thousand, and the proposed rate is $10.06 per thousand, or a 1.38% change in the property tax rate. The Property Tax Asking would be going up almost 5.8%. The average residential property would see an increase in their property taxes of 3.9% or $33.38. The average commercial property would see an increase of 1.78% or $74.26. The average industrial property would see an increase of 1.71% or $85.68. So there's only 11 cities in the state of Iowa that have a population greater than 50,000, and Dubuque is one of those. So in many factors, including property tax rate, we compare ourselves with those other 10 cities. And you can see, at this property tax rate, the city of Dubuque would have the lowest property tax rate of the 11 cities. The highest city, Waterloo, their property tax rate would be almost 120% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. The average of the other 10 cities, that rate is 55% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. So since 1989, which was when the local option sales tax was passed in Dubuque, the average homeowner has to average an annual increase in cost in the city portion of their property taxes of 1.45%, or about $9.28 a year. If the state of Iowa had been fully funding the homestead tax credit, the increase would have averaged about $6.62 a year. So some significant issues that are impacting the budget. So several years ago, the state of Iowa made some property tax changes related to commercial and industrial, and they created a two-tier assessment system, and they promised to backfill the lost revenues that the cities would experience. Well, a few years ago, they decided they were going to stop backfilling it, and that incrementally, over time, they would keep reducing that backfill payment. So, which means we start the year, the budget year, in the hole. So you can see that the current year, the backfill for the property tax loss was $880,000, and next year, it'll be $646,000. So we start off about $150,000 in the hole because of that. Then, related to the two-tier assessment limitation, the backfill in the current year is estimated at $577,000, and for next year, it's estimated at $387,000, so another, a loss of another $200,000. So now we're $350,000 in the hole, starting the budget process. The state also changed what's called the residential rollback this year. So now, an additional 2.35% of a property owner's property is subject to property taxes. So in the current year, just over 46% of the value of your home is subject to property taxes. In the next year, it'll be just over 47% is subject to property taxes. The homestead exemption, so this new exemption was created last year, and the city will be losing $224,000 in revenue this year from this exemption. So there's a difference between a homestead credit and a homestead exemption. A homestead credit actually is paid for by the state. A homestead exemption is paid for by the city. And so this is a direct loss in revenue to the city of another $224,000, continuing to dig that hole deeper that we start off the budget year in. Last year, the state also passed a new exemption for a military credit, and in that case, the city loses about $68,000 in revenue, because once again, it's an exemption and not a credit, so the city has to pay it. So it's a loss of $68,000. Now, just to look at our general revenues, the DRA lease payments, we're projecting that we're going to see a decrease of almost $200,000 in next fiscal year in our gaming lease revenues. In our interest revenues, a little bit better news, we're looking at an increase of, from $1.7 million to $2.3 million in our interest revenues. And that's based on the fact mainly that we have a new banking services agreement that pays us interest on our checking account. Local option sales tax revenue, those receipts are projected to decrease from the amount that we budgeted last year, but only slightly, and 50% of that money goes to property tax relief. Hotel motel tax revenue, much better picture there, we're projecting to see a over $500,000 increase in our hotel motel tax revenue. And I think with the completion of the Field of Dreams project by the spring of 2027, I'm sorry, 2026, next fiscal year, we'll start to even see a brighter picture on hotel motel tax revenue. And also, the city council has a development agreement with a developer for two new hotels, oh, I'm sorry, one developer for two new hotels and another one for the DRA for one new hotel. So those should be coming onboard sometime, not in fiscal year 26, the fiscal year we're talking about right now, but in fiscal year 27, the following fiscal year. Our riverfront lease revenues for what's called our industrial riverfront are projected to increase by about $163,000 next year. Our franchise fee revenue, both of the private utilities did get approved rate increases by the Iowa Utilities Board, so we believe we'll be seeing an increase in revenue from both our natural gas franchise fees and our electric franchise fees. Ambulance revenues will see a very slight decrease, well, actually, not a very slight decrease, that's about $200,000, so fairly significant, well, it's $300,000, fairly significant decrease. Health insurance, we're projecting a 4.61% increase in our health insurance costs, but since we have healthy reserves, we're a self-funded health insurance program, and we have very healthy reserves, so we're not recommending an increase in the budget of the cost of our health insurance. We've had to do some reorganization in the communications office, because no longer does the cable franchise fee, it continues to diminish each year as residents switch from cable TV for their broadcast news and things like that to streaming services, and we don't get a fee off of streaming services. And so because of that, we're recommending eliminating a three-quarter time vacant position in the communications office, and we'll have to move a significant amount of the cost to the communications office from the franchise fee, the cable utility franchise fee, to the general fund. We do have recommended wage increases, so we have union contracts that, of course, we have to honor. The professional firefighters in their contract get a 3.5% raise next year. The Dubuque Police Protective Association gets a 5% raise next year. The non-represented employees, so that's not a collective bargaining agreement, I'm recommending a 3% wage increase. And with that wage increase, if you look at over the last 10 years, the employees still will have fallen behind the rate of inflation, but just barely. And we're currently negotiating the contracts with the two Teamsters Unions. The other thing that the mayor and city council authorized two years ago, when you made employee retention and recruitment a priority, was a classification and compensation study. So we are implementing, in this fiscal year, FY '26, the results of that compensation and classification study, and at a cost of about $2 million. And so, you know, unfortunately, what we found out is many of our positions were not competitively compensated, and so that's being brought up through this wage plan. In July of 2023, Moody's Investor Services upgraded the city's outstanding general obligation bonds from AA3 to AA2. That's the third highest bond rating available. In January of 2025, Moody's Investor Services affirmed that AA2 credit rating on our general obligation bonds, and the higher credit rating means the city can borrow money at lower cost and is outside information of the fiscally responsible decision-making of the mayor and city council. So one of the things that mayor and city council has done over the last 10 years is reduce the debt load of the city as far as the use of the city's statutory debt limit. So by the Iowa constitution, a community cannot issue debt that exceeds 5% of the assessed valuation of the community. And in fiscal year 2015, we were at 90% of our statutory debt limit. But in fiscal year '26, so the year we're talking about for this budget, you'd be just over 33% of the statutory debt limit. And once again, I talked about there's 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000, and we compare ourselves against those cities. And so if you look at the use of the statutory debt limit, we would have the fifth lowest use of that of the 11 cities. Only Iowa City, Council Bluffs, Ankeny, and Ames would use less of the statutory debt limit. And if you look at the average of the other 10 cities, the average is 42.5% use of statutory debt limit, and we're at 33.5%. So we're also well below the average of all the other cities. We also have healthy reserves, which is one of the reasons that Moody's gives for giving us a good bond rating, and you can see in this budget, we'd be able to maintain our healthy reserves. Now, each year, the mayor and city council do your three-day strategic planning session. You establish your five-year goals, and you pick 10, about 10, sometimes it's 11 or 12 priorities for the year. And then I give that to the department managers and the boards and commissions, and I say, okay, now, your session usually happens in late summer or fall. I give it to the departments, and I tell them that, okay, now, in March or April, I have to make a budget recommendation to the council, so I need to know what resources do you need to accomplish these priorities? And so this year, I had a request for what we call improvement packages. The requests were over $2.3 million, and if you do pass this levy that I'm recommending tonight, there would be almost $900,000 available to help fund those improvement packages. So over a million dollars of the improvement packages would hit the cutting room floor, because they wouldn't, there wouldn't be any money to fund them. So the recommendation for the maximum property tax dollars in fiscal year '26 is $29,861,901, a tax rate of $10.06,000. So this is a 5.77% increase in the amount of dollars over the fiscal year 2025 tax dollars. Now, next Monday night, on March 31st, is when I will present the full budget recommendation to you. And I've always thought this backwards in the state of Iowa, but this is the way it is. You're required to set the property tax rate before you see the budget recommendation. So you'll be establishing the rate tonight, and then whatever resources are available as you go through the budget hearings, then you'll have to adopt the budget by the end of April. So as I said, Monday, March 31st, I'll make the presentation at a public meeting of what my budget recommendation is. Then you have already scheduled public meetings on April 2nd, April 3rd, April 8th, April 9th, April 10th, April 22nd, and April 24th. And on each one of those nights, different city departments will make their presentation to you and to the public on what they're asking for in their budget. Then there's an opportunity to each one of those nights for residents to step up to the microphone and talk about any one of those departments that are on that night's agenda. And then on April 28th, you'll hold a final public hearing on the budget, at which you have to, by state law, adopt the budget. And the budget takes effect July 1st. Now, that night of April 28th is another opportunity for residents to step up to the microphone and express their opinions on the budget recommendation after they've heard all of the facts. And they can review all these recommendations, or make comments, or contact the city council on the city website. So with that, Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is here with me, and hopefully, we can answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Well, thank you, Mike. We, well, as Mike pointed out, we are in our first of several public hearings to consider city council approval of the fiscal year 2026 proposed property tax rate in dollars and the fiscal year 2026 budget and fiscal policy guidelines. So this is the moment for any public input. So do we have any public input on what we have in front of us tonight, or on the budget in general, as we're looking forward here? And I'll just remind you, name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Clark Slows, 2925 Burlington Street. And I think it's safe to say that paying property taxes is no one's favorite activity. That being said, kind of looking at the information that's on the website, looking at the history of Dubuque, increases in the levy, I'm just going to speak about the levy rate, not the overall tax askings, but has been, I'd say, has been reasonable. Even if you look at Iowans for Tax Relief, says that Dubuque has been reasonable. The one thing, you know, that kind of is, when people got that notice in March, the only thing that was useful on it was what's the levy rate going to be? The rest of the information is erroneous assumptions being made. There are other groups out there, like Iowans for Tax Relief, who are out there, are very active on Facebook right now, stating that the only thing that determines your final property tax bill is the amount of spending that a local agency does. They sit there and say your assessment, your rollback, your taxable value, and your tax credits or exemption play no part in that. That's erroneous, because if you don't have assessed property, how do you get property tax dollars? If you don't know the rollback, how do you determine your taxable value? And I don't know about if there's anybody here from Iowans for Tax Relief, but if you don't believe that your tax credits and exemptions lower your tax bill, for me, my credits and exemptions lower mine about $350. And if Iowans for Tax Relief don't want their exemptions or credits, they can write me a check for $350, and I'll put it for good use. They need to tell the full story. And even with the tax notices that we got, there are still five other things that determine your overall tax bill. There's, you know, the area education or NICC. There is the city assessor. There's the county hospital. There's things of that nature that aren't included in that, in those notices. So that notice, there's no way to determine what your final tax bill is going to be. And even for the schools, the legislature hasn't determined what the final funding is going to be for school aid. So they're supposed to meet that deadline 30 days after the governor submits a budget, but they failed to do that over the past how many years? And there's no accountability for our local legislators. I think we need to ask them, if you can't meet your deadlines, why should we vote for you? We should get somebody in there who can meet their deadlines and responsibilities. It's time for them to do their job. And I may not always agree with what the city does, you know, and that's okay. That's the American way to have a debate over that. My favorite thing is, is if, you know, there's an increase greater than the rate of inflation, I'm going to ask why. And Mike knows, I've asked him that in the past, and he's given me legitimate reasons. And if you got a legitimate reason, it's legitimate. There should really be no argument about that. I may be the only person to sit there and say, I consider overall, the city does a good job, especially in presenting information. There's loads of information out there. In fact, I think some of the information that Mike puts on the website, the history of the property tax levy, I think goes back to 1989. And I love data on that. You know, I'm a numbers guy, and, you know, love the what-if scenarios. The only thing I might disagree with Mike on, with the legislature considering changes to property tax, he's kind of made some projections what the levy rate may be to 2030. But can you really say that when you don't know what the final thing is going to be? I mean, they're talking about eliminating the rollback, changing some exemptions. One thing I do agree is, you should be able to take your assessed value, here's your levy rate, here are your exemptions, whatever they're going to be, and if you passed high school math, you should be able to determine what your final bill is going to be. So that's basically all that I got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clark, for your comments. Any others this evening? All right. Seeing no other public input here, do we have anything virtually? Okay.
David So of 2105 Embassy West Drive and Latisha McKnight of 2060 Washington Street submitted written input.
All right. Thank you very much, Adrian. Okay. Well, we will take it back to the table, then there will be a lot, as we pointed out here, lots of opportunities for public input over the weeks ahead of us here, as we have multiple different meetings coming up on those dates that you see there. So I'll kick us off real quick before, and then we're going to open it up to anybody else who wants to have some discussion, but I just want to say a few things. You know, first of all, I think there's a lot of talk about property taxes right now at the state of Iowa level. There's all kinds of things going on. I mean, there, we could be facing the largest property tax overhaul of our system since the 1970s. That's all fine and good. We are very active in that discussion as a city. That's not what we're That's not what we're going to be talking about for the next few weeks here, for the budget that we're talking about for the, this coming year, this coming fiscal year. And I say that out loud because I think it's an important thing to make sure we make that distinction. I don't disagree with Clark when you just said, you know, we need to, the projections going out in the future probably won't be the projections that we think they are. That's probably true. But as we start talking about what we're doing here, I do think it's important that we work with what we know. We only, we only have information that we actually know currently. We can't really, nobody's got the crystal ball out to be able to figure out exactly what's going to happen at the state of Iowa. Speaking of the state, though, you know, there are some ways, and Mike pointed these out in the presentation, that I think things have become a little more challenging for us as we go through this budgeting process. At the same time, I want to give our state legislature some credit for recognizing that this form that everybody's talking about is wrong. Every legislator that I've talked to this year has recognized that this form needs to change, and it's inaccurate, and it needs to say what it needs to say for us personally. Best-case scenario would be, we can plug in numbers and get our own property tax bill, so we know what it's going to look like. But that also comes with a cost. You know, if you're going to put something in a computer software program, it's going to be a difficult thing. It's the legislature's thing to figure out. I just want to give them credit for the fact that they recognize that it's wrong, and we're going to need some changes. So we're probably going to be repeating it over and over again, because the form we got this year is still the form we got, and it's still wrong. So we need to make sure that we're working with the information that we have here in front of us as we talk about these things. The only other thing I want to say, and then I'll open it up, and might have some more comments later. Mike, this PowerPoint, would it be okay, could you attach this for Monday night to the agenda, so we have this, just to go back for a record? I see that it's not actually in this agenda for tonight, which is fine, but I think if we have it for Mondays, it'd be nice to be able to pull it up and have residents be able to pull it up, so we can see it. Because I always find these really useful. It's nice to see a summary of things as we get into the nitty-gritty details of every single night. And then, Krenna, I forgot to ask you this over email, so I'll just ask it publicly. You usually send out a form, or a memo to us as a city council, reminding us of the process that we have essentially agreed on for how we might add or take away improvement packages or things within the budget. Is that a plan this year as well?
You'll have it by the end of the week.
All right. So by the end of the week, we'll have that memo. So for us up here, the, because we always kind of have a little bit of confusion, because every year we have to remind ourselves how this all works, which is fine, but Krenna's there to help us, to help guide us with instructions for how we might go about changing anything in the budget that is being presented to us. All right. With that, I'll stay quiet for a few moments and see who has anything to say. Mr. Jones?
Clark made reference to not being able to see the whole story on the mailing that came out, and that's absolutely true. I'll tell you what, you can see it here better than any place else I know of in Iowa. This is actually the fifth of 13 meetings that build this budget for this year, that are dedicated only to that. Every one of them was public meetings. We started back last August, 19th, 20th, and 21st. We spent four or five hours each of those nights with the facilitator and came up with the roadmap, basically, the goals and priorities for the city of Dubuque. Reducing a list of hundreds of really great things that would be fabulous for any community to implement, to the 10 or 12 that we could actually accomplish if we dedicated some human resources and some financial resources to it. So that begins the build. And we're back here March 3rd to set the, with the public meeting, to set tonight's meeting. On March 3rd, we had to say what the tax rate was going to be to talk about at this meeting. Now, Mike referred to that as being kind of a backwards process. It is. Because we're about to have all the rest of these meetings where we're going to get all the information, where we're going to see the whole story in this room. Every department manager is going to stand at that lectern and tell us what's going on in their departments, explain to us why it's costing more for them to operate. And I kind of get it. I never dreamed you could pay $2 million for a fire truck, but that's what they cost now. And there's some reasons for that, and none of them are really very good. I think the fire truck manufacturers have to quit building to the whim of every fire chief in the world and say, here's our base model, here's this model, here's this model, here's a list of options you can have. I think they can knock the price down probably by half or better if they start building it like everything else is built. But that's, that's a whole separate issue. But that's just one of many things that bites us harder than it bites most companies and most people. So the whole story is going to be available in this room. You're going to be able to see the department managers' presentations, you're going to be able to make comments on them, be able to ask us questions via phone or email or personal contacts. The whole story will be here. And I'll tell you what, there's no other city in Iowa doing 13 meetings to build their budget in front of the public. We're doing our very best to tell the story. Here's part of the problem, though, everybody isn't listening. A lot of folks aren't listening. And I don't enjoy paying my property taxes, but I'm pretty proud of what I'm getting for them. And that matters. Most citizens got a mailer today from our police department with their annual report, some of the highest crime clearance rates in North America. Something to be proud of. It's not free that that happens. We've got a fully accredited fire department that typically will knock down a one-room fire within two and a half, three minutes of arrival. That's not free, and that's not very many other places either. We've got a public works department that's right now working on accreditation and starting to see where the, where the standards fit what they're doing. And accreditation is all about proving that you're doing what you say you're going to do and saying what you're going to do. And it's, it's an arduous process. I've been through a couple of them in academics. That's a big deal, but it's not free. So you get to live in a city that has the lowest tax rate of any of the major cities in Iowa. You get to live in a city with some of the highest quality services, and it's a marginal kick in the butt to pay a little bit more. But proportionately, it's not more than you're paying for fuel, it's not more than you're paying for energy to heat and cool your home, it's not more than you're paying for most things in your life. And I'll tell you what, we're going to spend the next 10 meetings, nine meetings left, looking at every line item and trying to find ones that maybe are superfluous, maybe, maybe we think are unnecessary, maybe we think we could get along without. But it was a pretty arduous process to get them in there in the first place. So I don't look for this rate to probably reduce. If we find something, we'll certainly look at it. But I guarantee you, seven sets of eyes up here are going to be wide open, ears are going to be wide open, we're going to be paying attention, and we're going to be doing our level best to tell you the whole story. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any others up here? And I remember Mr. Resnick, too. Mr. Spring?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yesterday, I got an email from a gentleman who says he lives on Golden Eagle Drive, and that would be in my ward. And usually, and he didn't fill out his full address, because he sent me the direct email. And usually, when somebody doesn't give me their full address, I don't usually respond. But this one perked my interest. And basically, this gentleman said, "The city should stick with the effective property tax rate. The proposed increased tax rate at a time when the economy is already weighing heavily on homeowners. The city should be cutting back on programs, expenditures, and tax rates. The city seems to think it is allowed to have an open ticket to spending the residents' livelihood. Consider canceling programs and layoffs like the rest of the world, such as the federal government and the private sector. All is not well outside of the city programs and the city staff that these proposed property tax increases could, would increase support for." So my response to him was, okay. I have no pro, uh, thank you for reaching out on the proposed tax changes. I understand where you're coming from on cutting back. We've all been feeling the effects of inflation. But do you have any examples or ideas on what departments or programs should be cut back? So in order for me, as your elected official, to serve, I would need examples or ideas on what should be cut. Then I can direct our city manager to provide information to me on how we can save in the city budget. Because I've already, the reason I mention this is, I've been hearing from folks already, oh, we should just cut. Okay. What do you want to cut? That is what I've been trying to stress with citizens. And my biggest thing, I like to point out, and I appreciate the city manager for providing these improvement package lists. It's 20 pages of documents that you can help us make decisions on, so. And there is a discussion, there was, in tonight's information, there was already things that are already not going to be approved in general, so that's already good. But if there are things that the citizens do want us to cut, be very precise, is what I'm saying. Don't just carte blanche and just say everything. Be very precise. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spring. Ms. Farber?
Yes, thank you very much. So what I wanted to stress were three areas that I thought were relatively important. And one is the definition between credits and exemptions. And I think Mike made a very good point, that we, in the city, are required to deal with those exemptions that come off of our budget versus the state, which can issue credits. So I think that's important to understand the difference, and I think, Clark, you mentioned that as well. So thank you for helping with that definition and that understanding. I think it's important, just relating to what you just said, Danny, regarding the General Fund CIP, I mean, again, it was noticed that we had over 2.3 million requests, but yet being prudent and understanding the budget restrictions that we are under, the recommendation is for almost $900,000 of that. And I think that's important, because we are really trying to scale back, but be prudent, and yet be responsive to the city needs, and especially public safety needs for infrastructure. So I think that's one point to bring to our attention. Also, the difference between last year and this year is about 1.6 million in terms of tax revenue. And when you take a look at where that comes from, it's really relating to the fact that, kudos for the city of Dubuque, and that we are increasing our property values, and therefore it's a great place to live and work. And so that, over time, will add to what our tax rate is. And I think that's just a great statement for the city of Dubuque, as we're trying to expand our businesses and our workforce and our amenities, and we're really improving as a city as a whole for what can be assessed for property tax. So I think that's also important to note. And that the difference, as Mike had pointed out, between the 9.9 and the 10 is really 1.38%. And so when you think about it in the short and the long term, that's really an appropriate and still very, very prudent percent. And so my hat goes off to both Jennifer and to Mike's office for, really, the regiment that they put in as they were looking at how we can work with our general fund and our operational budget this year to make sure that it continues on its course of being prudent and fiduciaries with the, with the tax dollars. So hopefully, Clark, I kind of summarized what you were saying as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. As my colleagues have said, I hope, I hope that our residents will follow along with us as we go through every single department. It is really a great learning opportunity to see the services and the people that provide those services for the tax dollars that we collect. And following that, I hope that, as Mr. Sprank said, that you will let us know specifically, maybe how those programs benefit you, or maybe some ideas for changes that you can make. There are so many opportunities on, both online, on the budget tool, email us directly, give us a call. It's helpful for us to hear from you, so please be a part of the process as we go through it. It's a, it's a long exercise, as Mr. Jones said. And so to go through that without input from our residents, we're really missing out. So please take part and let us hear from you. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
Thank you. I really appreciate all of the documents, as my colleagues have mentioned, that really spell out a number of, especially the larger items, related to, honestly, infrastructure. We are an old city, and if we want our population to grow, we need infrastructure to be solid for future generations. But in all honesty, we've got to fix what we've got now for the people we have. And I hope that people will review the budget to see things such as the sanitary sewer projects, to listen in those nights, the water resource and recovery center, our emergency services. These are basic things that we provide to our community that they expect us to provide, and we are providing them. That does come with a cost, and as Mr. Jones gave example, those costs, just like they're higher for all of us outside our, at the grocery store, maybe buying a car, putting gas in our car, these costs are getting higher for us as an institution of a city government. And so I love budget. I really do. And I love it because I do get a lot of feedback from people, and I appreciate it, and I want specifics. Because I can't be effective with just general, our taxes are too high. I understand that people are struggling, and I want to be fiscally responsible. Tell me how to do that for you, rather than blanket, I just don't want to pay taxes. We have to be constructive with how we are fiscally responsible. I want to do the right thing for you. So specifics are helpful. The more that you give me, the more that I can contemplate where we need to go with that, and what questions to ask of our city staff. What ask, when, when they get up and they talk to us about their specific use of the dollars that we provide for them, I want to be able to ask them the right questions. So please, if you have experience with a specific department that you have not been satisfied, I want to know that. And all of our emails are online. Please reach out to those emails and share your thoughts with us. But I'm excited about budget, because I think it's really one of the most important things that we do to serve our community and the reason we're elected. So thank you for the opportunity to serve you, and I look forward to hearing from people.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ben Milligan, I'd like for you to talk a little bit about the complexities involved, especially why is it that there's a different residential rate than a commercial rate? And then why is it that, you know, the commercial rate is about a half of the, you know, the hike that we have at the residential? Wouldn't it be better if we could maybe equalize that, and then there would be a little bit higher for commercial, but it would be lower for residential? And I know there's some complexity involved. Could you address that, please? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Resnick. So the bottom line is, the state of Iowa does, state law does not allow us to do that. So the only thing the mayor and city council are allowed to do is set the property tax rate. Then there's a formula by which it is applied against the different classifications of property. We have no control over that. It's, the four classes of property are residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural. And to give you an example of, you talk about the complexity. I talked about how the rollback factor for residential, which determines the amount of your assessed value on your home, is subject to property tax, is, I'm looking for my slide, it shows that it's about 47% of the value of your home. In the case of commercial, the first $150,000 of the commercial value gets that same rollback. Then the rest of the value of commercial property gets a 10% rollback. Is that, am I right on that, Jennifer? It's, thank you. So I was just checking with the chief financial officer, because I said it's complex. Unfortunately, sometimes I get, get the math wrong. So, and then same thing with industrial. They have a certain portion that gets the full rollback, and then a certain portion that gets only a partial rollback. So we're not in control. The only thing we're in control of is setting, and I say we, I mean the mayor and city council, is setting the property tax rate. You have no control over how it's applied against the different classes of property. So you can't, as you described, try and maybe put a little more tax on commercial, industrial, and a little less on residential. You don't have that authority.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, I honestly don't have much to add. At this point, you know, there is going to be a ton of discussion over the weeks ahead, and I have to agree, I actually enjoy this time of year, oddly enough. It is very interesting to hear what city departments do, what they've been doing for the last year, what their plans are for the year ahead. It is, it's very, it is absolutely the most transparent process in Iowa. I've never talked to another city that does this way, to be able to have this many meetings with this much time and this much effort of putting everything out for the public to see. It really is a great way to be able to put a budget together and make a good decision. So our decision tonight here, and the motion on the table, is to receive and file So our decision tonight here, and the motion on the table, is to receive and file and approve this property tax rate as it stands in front of us here. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Adrienne, do you call the roll, please?
Rousell.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. And there's no other business on the agenda this evening, so we'll see everyone back here on Monday. We will be adjourned.[1785.13][1785.13]